Good morning. Welcome to the City Council Meeting, June 11th. I would like to remind everyone, please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our City Council Meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube Channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Beck?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you once again, humbly as we know how, come with bowed heads and humble hearts, looking to you, the author and finish of our faith. Today, we need your leading, your guiding, your direction to carry out the business of the city, God. We thank you for our mayor, Mayor Ford, this council, every department here, God, and we just thank you for all that you've done, all that you're doing, and all that you're going to do. God, we give you the praise, the glory, and the honor. We ask it all in Jesus' name, in all that agrees, say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee Work Session and Council Meeting held on June 4th.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of May 31st through June 6th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 is Proclamations and Commendations. Mayor Ford, we have one today, I believe?
Yeah. Councilwoman Latham, I left a purple sticky note up there. Do you see it? It may be on the back of that folder. Yeah, thanks for it. My pink, I'm colorblind. Thank you. Okay, I want to recognize somebody who's with us today that works for us, that received a certification, Ms. Jennifer Smith. I don't know if she can come forward or not, Iva, because she's typing.
You can, I'll take the next one.
Come on. Okay. So I want to read this on behalf of the Mayor's Office and City Council. Ms. Jennifer Smith started her journey with the City of Gadsden in July 2007 when she came on part-time in the City Clerk's office. By February 2012, she became a full-time employee. In November 2017, she became the Acting Assistant City Clerk, and shortly after, in December 18, she assumed the position of Assistant City Clerk. Jennifer enrolled in the International Institute of Municipal Clerks in the University of Alabama to become a Certified Municipal Clerk. She fulfilled the requirements to earn her Certified Municipal Clerk designation and received her certificate in February 2023. More importantly, she was declared to be proficient in her position and has demonstrated mastery of administrative skills critical to good government. Jennifer is currently enrolled in the Master's Municipal Clerk Program, and she's on her way to achieving this advanced level of education experience. I would like to commend Jennifer on a job well done in becoming a Certified Municipal Clerk. I thank you for your determination in going above and beyond the call of Assistant City Clerk. I also wish you well on completing the Master Municipal Clerk Program. So Jennifer, on behalf of myself and the City Council, we want to thank you and commend you for completing that course.
Thanks.
Thank you. So many of us, I saw this at a baseball game one time, and I like to ask everybody to do this. If anyone has had cancer and is not ashamed to stand up, would you please stand up at this time? Has anyone known anyone in your family that has had cancer? Please stand up. So I'd like for us to look around the room and see about what it does. Now you can take your seat. Thank you very much. But cancer is something serious that we're continuing to pray for and continue to try to find a cure. But Taylor, he will be receiving the proclamation today on behalf of Gadsden Regional Hospital. Taylor, come on up here. Whereas, this is a proclamation, a cancer survivor is defined as anyone living with a history of cancer from the moment of diagnosis through the remainder of life, and there are more than 18 million cancer survivors in America. Whereas, a cancer diagnosis is a life game changer, and survivors face long-term and life-limiting effects of the illness and its treatments, including physical, emotional, psychosocial, legal, and financial issues. And whereas, since over 1.7 million new cancer cases will be diagnosed in the United States this year, increased access to quality cancer care, screening, and prevention, especially among minorities and the medically undeserved, must be a top priority in our community. And whereas, the great city of Gadsden has an active, productive cancer survivor population, and whereas hundreds of communities worldwide will be celebrating life during this time. And whereas, on behalf of the residents of Gadsden, Alabama, I salute all cancer survivors and those who support them. And now therefore, I, Craig Ford, Mayor of City of Gadsden, Alabama, do join with the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming Friday, June 7th, as Cancer Survivors Day. Taylor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Good to see you. You want to say something?
Well, on behalf of all the survivors, I'd just like to say thank you. And so we had about 300 attendees last Friday at our event, so it continues to grow every year. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor Ford. Thank you, Taylor. That's a great program over there, for sure. All right, that's item 7. Item 8's unfinished business. We have none today. Item 9 is a resolution. It awards bid number 3565 for Gadsden Sports Park Irrigation Pumping Project. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to Bob Smith Construction Incorporated, and the amount is $560,716.50. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll just say this project, for those that weren't tuned in last week when we discussed it at a little more length, but we'll be pumping raw water out of the Coussa River to provide all the irrigation services for the Gadsden Sports Park. It's going to save the city a little over $100,000 a year, I think, in water costs to be able to use that natural water out of the Coussa River as opposed to treated water from our water treatment plant. So this will get that ball started.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to, I'm sorry. Mic off. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution, accepting permanent drainage easements from City of Gadsden. This is for necessary easements located within city-owned lots required to construct drainage improvements in the Adams Park subdivision from approximately 15th Street to Adams Circle. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Glad you got it right. Is there much to add?
That's right. That's good. That's good stuff. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution, authorizing acceptance of a grant from Alabama Tourism Department. This is to assist with expenses involved with Smoke on the Falls Fireworks Show. Well, wait a minute. Smoke on the Falls, a fireworks show, and Christmas on the Coussa, and the amount is $7,800. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we just want to thank Tina from Tourism and everything she's done to partner up with City of Gadsden. I just want to make sure she's recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. That is a good move on her part. Thank you, Tina. Any other comments? If not, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2024 budget. This is related to Agenda Item Number 11 and reflects receipt of the $7,800 grant from Alabama Tourism Department. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 13 is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2024 budget. This is to transfer funds to be used for the Gadsden Sports Park Irrigation Pumping Project from the landfill account to improvements other than buildings account, and the amount is $565,000. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 14 is new business. I think we have one or two today.
Yes, Mr. President. This is a resolution technically routed to us from the legal department, but essentially this will cover some major pressing issues in the police department and in public works as well as facility maintenance. This is a resolution authorizing us to transfer funds from the undesignated fund balance to, in the amount of $1,068,404.95. The purpose of this fund transfer is several things. We'll be purchasing a new garbage truck for the Public Works Department. The cost of that garbage truck is $410,000. For those of you who weren't in attendance for the pre-council, we had a very detailed presentation by the Public Works Department outlining exactly how much we would have to spend to bring some of our aging loader trucks and garbage trucks up to functional capability. And that expense would far exceed the cost of replacing these things, something that we have not done on a regular schedule historically leading up to this administration. So again, the $1,068,000 would be $410,000 for a garbage truck, $500,000 for two loader trucks, $26,104 for five electric bicycles for the police department, and $132,300 to replace the full HVAC system at the former YMCA building that the city now owns. So again, the total of that would be $1,068,404.95. And given the importance of keeping our public works and trash services operating seamlessly, I would ask that if there's no objections, that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next one I have is just a little bit of an administrative follow-up to that resolution. This is the technical ordinance that would physically, or officially, transfer that money out of the undesigned fund, or unassigned fund balance into the individual accounts that will make the purchases that I just listed. So again, this would be an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget for the use of funds for these various items. So if there's no objections, I would ask for immediate consideration today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
I'll move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. That's all for new business. Item 15 is department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any today? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford, if you'll kick us off?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just brief on some items that were taking place right now. I had an email last night from Sierra King, who's the president of the CCRC. She was very, very good and very polite in the way she sent her email and some items that need to be addressed at the Carver Rec Center. I just wanted to let everybody know, we are constantly doing projects at the Carver Rec Center behind there, and also she gave me some good ideas of the front part of the Carver Rec Center and inside the building. We're working with Councilman Avery in trying to get some things done back there. Church of the Highlands is going to do a serve day at the playground area and the splash pad and some areas, thanks to Tina King and Mark Price, our pastor at Church of the Highlands. So there's a lot of good things that are happening down there. The roof will begin replacement. Aaron, I'm not sure when. You may know, or...
The roof starts Monday.
Next Monday and next week, so we're excited about that also. We want to welcome the Community College System Board to Gadsden, Alabama. We're very excited about that. Every president from the junior college system is in Gadsden today and tomorrow, and we will be entertaining them, hence the reason for Broad Street Bridge being shut down tonight for them to showcase Gadsden. This is probably one of the first times this has ever happened, in my knowledge, and it's, we're very honored to be able to have them come here, and the chancellor, Jimmy Baker, who's a friend of mine, which leads into the next comment. The Advanced Manufacturing Center ribbon cutting will be tomorrow for Gadsden State, one of three sites in the state of Alabama that is receiving one of these buildings for workforce development to help educate our workforce and be able to help us recruit industry. We had a ribbon cutting last week at the former Elliott Community Center, which is currently known now as the Gadsden Senior Center Wellness Center in Alabama City, so we're excited about that. If you haven't been by there, y'all need to go by and play dominoes, and I think they're running out of chairs over there, Councilwoman Minatra, but it's fantastic. We had a free dumpster day last Saturday, so Tina King is to be commended for putting that on with Public Works and the employees for what they did. They had sites in every one of your council districts, and we collected 57.59 tons of trash, garbage, or items. So that's 115,000 pounds that our Public Works transported to the landfill. So that helps us, and we committed to that as a council and a mayor's office. Once we change the rules and policies of how we're picking up, that we continue to provide these free days, so I was excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck, and good to see you back.
Thank you.
First, let me say, I just want to commend Public Works after seeing and hearing the presentation this morning. I think, coming into this position, I thought that that was one of the things that Gadsden did perfect, that I don't hardly get any calls about garbage pickup or anything like that. But then to hear that and hear the extenuating circumstances that they have been able to keep that as well as they have, there to be commended with that. I'm trying to move on, because I don't want you all talking about me after this. Congratulations to Jennifer for your accomplishment on your certification. Let me say this. On Friday, we had the opportunity to kind of stop through with the CDP 2000 Empowerment Day, and the president of that board was so kind to give an update about some of the things that went on. It was an awesome event. I think it was very well attended. I want to kind of give some of that. There were over 400 meals served on that day, 22 pints of blood were given, and they registered 30 voters, both new and ex-felons. So it was a good day, and they are to be commended for not only that event, but the things that they are doing in our community and in our city. Which brings me to an announcement. Community Development Project 2000 Golf Tournament will be held June 15, 2024, 8:30 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., and it's going to be at Twin Bridges Golf Club. It is a two-man scramble. I am just reading, there's several things here, but there's a two-man scramble, and registration for the event is from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 a.m. So encourage all of you to take part in that. If you need more information on that, you can contact Mr. John Reed for information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President, and glad to have you back as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just want to congratulate Ms. Jennifer Smith on her certification. The dumpster day went very well, so we were definitely excited about a lot of all these new implementations that the mayor is putting in place. It's really helping our city to continue to move forward. Want to thank the City Council, and thank you, Mayor Ford, and your staff for all that you all are doing. Want to remind everybody about the homegoing for Ms. Sharon Menez's son today at 2:00 p.m. If you can't make that, just please, just continue to keep the Menez family lifted up in your prayers. Also, a young man by the name of Marquise Ross, many of you may know him as Mark Ross, was residing here in Gadsden, really was a celebrity back in the 80s and 90s, part of a famous group called Two Live Crew, and just continue to lift this family up in prayers, whereas they, of course, already had a cremation service for him, but we'll be doing something for him in the city of Gadsden. So I'm excited about all this going on in our city and all the great things that's on the horizon, and just continue to keep looking up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. President, a couple of things, of course. My condolences to Ms. Menez. I've known her a long time, and my heart goes out to her and her family on that loss. I want to give credit where credit's due, as everyone said, to Public Works for all their efforts in general, not just the Free Collection Day, but just how hard they work and how hard they've worked to beautify this city over the last two years. I've gotten more compliments in the last year about how much better this city looks than I have since I've been on this council, between cleaning up the riverfront and the riverways to beautify the city, to doing an excellent job with the trash collection and the debris and garbage pickup. I mean, it's impressive, so thank you for everything that they do. And congratulations, Ms. Jennifer. It's often said around here that Iva Nelson has shoes that are impossible to fill, but you're well on your way. There's no doubt about that, and we're lucky to have you as much as we're lucky to have Ms. Iva. The last thing I'll say is, I want to remind everybody about the new app that the city has called Hey Gadsden. You can download it on your phone. If you see an issue, if there's something that you don't like in your neighborhood, all you have to do is just take a picture of it and hit send. It automatically gets routed to the right department. They know exactly who is supposed to work on it. You don't have to worry about it getting caught up by a bunch of sorry, no-good so-and-so's like me that don't do their job and aren't in your neighborhood as much as they're supposed to. So if you want to go directly to the source, the easiest way is to download that Hey Gadsden app, and it'll go straight to the person that's supposed to be able to fix it. In the meantime, for those of y'all that don't want to use the app, my phone number is 256-399-3738. That is my personal cellphone number. I've given it out from this podium many times over the last five years in public, so if you can't find it, go back and look at old YouTube videos of these council meetings where I've given it out over a dozen times. This is my personal cellphone number. You can call me anytime you want to. Please do not make a post on Facebook and assume that it is my job to find it and do something about it. So please, just call me directly or use the Hey Gadsden app. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, council. Councilwoman Minatra?
As I said, it's very difficult to follow, but tomorrow, at our new Senior Wellness Center in Alabama City, we have our very first event. The Council on Aging actually has an office there, and they are hosting their annual Elder Abuse Summit, and there will be guest speakers, lots of information on community resources, and there will be free lunch, and this is for all seniors over the age of 55. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Four years I'm there.
Councilman Robinson, you're close. You're getting close.
I am getting close. Yeah, Dumpster Day, or whatever we wanted to call it, that was big for District 7 of Nakalula Falls. I saw the big pile of stuff out there. I was down there a couple of times. There was a lot of people down there throwing all their trash, and the few people I talked to just enjoyed that we are doing that. It's good for the city, and you've got to think about all that trash that's not getting put on the side of the road or getting dumped somewhere else. I did, you know, when I realized it really wasn't a dumpster day, it was more of like laying on the concrete, and I was like, I was out there going like, now hang on, this is going to be a mess, but I rode up there later. It was thick and span and clean, so thanks to fellow works for that. Barbarian Challenge this weekend at Nakalula Falls, mayor is John Moore still barbarian it?
He went and did the rope thing, and he fell, and I think he's still in the water. So... But yes, he is.
If we had one of those pedal boats up there, we could rescue him.
But he is doing it.
All right. Good deal. That'll be Saturday, and actually Friday night, they're having a cool thing. They're having a rope climb out of the gorge. That's going to be a really neat thing for Gadsden to watch. If you want to go up there, I think they're going to have a couple of food trucks and some beverage trucks you can watch from the campground size. They're going to have it all lit up, and you get to watch the guys and girls climb up the rope and see if they can make it all the way to the top. So I think that's going to be very interesting for Gadsden. And also Saturday, cause of the Barbarian Challenge, just watch out for all the traffic, and I think the ticketed part of the park is going to be closed that day, and the trails for that event, I think I read somewhere that the putt-putt awesome golf course we have up there is, will still be open. And Jason Wilson's going to be sponsoring that Purple Dragon Pedal Boat, so I think he'll probably put his number on that, so if you're ever out there on the pedal boat. So the Jason Wilson number 22 Purple Dragon Pedal Boat with his personal number on it. Thank you.
The Frito-Lay.
Thank you. A lot going on in Gadsden, and it's good to be home. I was out of town for 12 days, and thank you, Councilman Smith, pro tem. You did a great job. I watched the council meetings, and everything went well. Everybody behaved. I think Jason had more fun than anybody up here, so... Councilman Wilson, I should say. Sorry about that. I also want to thank Jennifer Smith. Jennifer, thank you for taking time and taking those courses and improving your knowledge, and that helps our city. You know, I didn't realize six years ago, when I got on the council, there's so much happens in the city clerk's office. Every office has a lot going on, but it's kind of the nerve center, as you've probably found out, Mayor. Everything kind of funnels through the city clerk's office. So much responsibility for record-keeping and things like that, so thank you, Jennifer, for all your work. It's very appreciated. Also, I want to thank Public Works. We had a lengthy conversation this morning. You know, things run in cycles, whether it's business or city government. We're in a cycle, new administration and this new council, where a lot of our equipment is aged. I think every garbage truck we have, every claw truck, I guess in the range of 800,000 miles to a million miles, and you have to replace it. It's reached a point where fixing them is just not the best financial decision. So sometimes you have to make hard decisions like that. I admire the mayor and his staff for doing that, and Public Works, and Tiffany, and our own councilwoman, Minatra, leading the, she's the chairwoman of the Public Works Committee. A lot of hours, a lot of work and study has gone into it, so we are spending millions of dollars of taxpayer money to replace aged trucks. These trucks are, oh gosh, anywhere from 10 to 14 years old, and it's just, we have to do that. I've seen in my neighborhood, in just recent time, a big oil spill, and I would call, and turns out a hose busted or came loose on a truck, and there's transmission fluid in the street, so we've reached that point. So I think we're making the right moves and the right decisions, and I appreciate the leadership, Mayor Ford, coming out of your office to upgrade that equipment. And I think once we get to a certain point, then it's going to be easier to keep the rotation better. Right now, we're swimming upstream in order to get to that point, but we're going to get there, and we're doing the right thing for the citizens to make sure we can provide the necessary services, which is what we're supposed to do, is protect and serve, and so that's part of the service part, is to pick up trash and pick up debris in the neighborhoods. Also, want to thank Christina at Nakalula Falls in regards to many things, but specifically the Barbarian Challenge. What a Herculean task it is to put on. I guess there'll be over 1,000 participants in that event this weekend. I know it was a time when that was an outside company came in and did that. The City of Gadsden purchased the rights to the name and the trademark Barbarian Challenge, and that now belongs to the city, belongs to you, the taxpayers, and a lot of responsibility goes with that, and so thank you to Christina Richardson and her staff at Nakalula Falls for all that they do up there. There's so much that goes on at Nakalula Falls. It's so well-run and so well-organized. We're very fortunate to have the folks up there that we have, so thank you very much. Mayor Ford had mentioned the Advanced Manufacturing Center. It's one of three in the state of Alabama this year that's been constructed, about a $30, $35 million investment by the Alabama Community College System as our own, and usually we don't say people's names from up here, but as our own Greg Bailey has pointed out, his 40-plus years in the newspaper business, he's seen a lot of things. And I'm in agreement with Greg that this manufacturing center is the most important thing to happen in Gadsden, Alabama, since the Goodyear Plant came in 1927. And that's a pretty big statement, if you think about it. That's a heavy statement, but this will change the face of the workforce. We've talked about it up here, jobs of tomorrow. Well, they're here today, but we've got to have our workforce trained, and that is going to enable the workforce to be trained, whether you're a high school student, whether you're someone out of school, and you just, you want to have a career change because things are changing so fast in our economy. Now you have a place to go. Now you have a place to go get the certifications and the training needed to help you and your family and to provide for your family by having a good job. It helps the mayor's office and this council and David Hooks at the IDA recruit businesses, and I think we're going to see an uptick in that with the training facility there. We can recruit companies, we can help them train their future employees, and they'll want to come to an area that can provide that kind of assistance. So we're very fortunate. What time is that tomorrow? Is it 2 o'clock?
1:30.
1:30?
1:30, yeah.
Over on each Broad Street at the Advanced Manufacturing Center, Gadsden State Community College, open to the public. Would encourage y'all to come and see what your tax dollars, your state tax dollars have done for our community. It's just a big, big plus. So again, it's good to be home. Appreciate everybody, and it looks like we'll get out of here in maybe record time.
Yeah.
I think there are a lot of happy faces do that. But thank you so much, and again, with Councilman Wilson, we're all available. You can find us pretty easily. If you need something, call your councilperson, okay? Thank you very much. Have a great day.